...student by Puerto Rican parents. He is lieutenant of ladder 25 and has served with the Boston Fire Department with distinction for 30 years. We are so grateful for your example. We know that in order for our young people to be it, they must first see it. We thank you for the trail that you have blazed, for being a role model, for being a mentor. It takes a very unique person to run into danger with all the running away from it. And so we thank you for your role in our city and what you've done with the Boston Fire Department. And he's also very active in the nonprofit community. He teaches mixed martial arts at a level ground MMA facility and teaches free classes a couple of nights a week. So again, we thank you for all of your contributions to community and I would love to present you this award officially. And I want you to say a few words, congratulations. [applause] Can you hear some of your folks, some of your peers that are joining here today? Would you like to overhand them? Anyone else from the Boston Fire Department?
Oh, okay. I just found out which...
Oh, okay.
When I started this, this is fantastic. I didn't expect this at all. So born and raised in the through my life, rough upbringing in Boston, loud, beautiful place. I've always done things in the community with the children in the neighborhood. I've been training and teaching martial arts since I was 14 years old. Getting kids off the street, teaching in my basement, in my garage, traveling nationally, getting big sponsors to pay for our trips and everything like that. I'm still doing that today. My biggest motivator was that I didn't want children to go through any bad things that I went through growing up. And that still motivates me today. And today with the heroin epidemic going on, I see that firsthand on the job. It is very bad. It's touching everyone everywhere. And we can't do enough as a community to donate the time in some way to be proactive in solving these issues in our own communities, in the community as a whole in Boston. Somebody asked me one time, and I spent a lot of time with the children, you know, "Why do you even care so much? Why even bother?" I said, "You can't care enough. If you can give a little, you can give more." Okay? And the rewards that come from that, when we see these children go on to college, with one of our programs, you get college placement, job placement, they become engineers or doctors. We don't do this for the money. We're making our community safer. That's my proudest achievement. I see these kids going out and have families and great careers and travel. It's, that's, that's what it's all for. It just makes the world and our community a better place. And for all the familiar faces, I hadn't seen in quite some time, growing up, Dona Molina, I never did. All these people I've seen growing up dedicating their lives to the community, you people have been examples for me, mentors without even trying to be. And now I'm doing the same thing for the youth in the city. So thank you very much. I wouldn't be here if it wasn't for you. I love you all. Thanks again. [applause]
I want to give a quick word because it's so true that very often you are mentoring people who you've never met, but simply by your example inspiring them. So next I have the professional privilege and the personal honor of presenting an award to Winalia Rivera, who you may know from "Name of the Neighbor," or her labor organizing, or her work with former Governor DeWalt Patrick. I have the blessing and the fortune, the benefit of her sister friendship, of her expertise, of her counsel, which is so, I'm just so, so fortunate to have had that. Winalia was the very first hired, she was my general consult in my congressional campaign. And I want to highlight that because very often we talk about leadership parity, and a lot of the emphasis is on whose name will be on the ballot and who will raise their hand to run for office. But it's so important that we are building the bench behind the candidates and that we are investing in Latino excellence and talent. And I'm so proud that I could do that with, with Winalia. I also just wanted to say that we're making strides, but here in the city of Boston, although we celebrate diversity, we, we're struggling to honor it. Because honoring diversity is about shared power. And the power of the Hispanic and Latino community is growing. The front page of the USA Today yesterday spoke about the power of the Hispanic vote. In our own campaign for Congress, when we made the decision to not go on television with mainstream media and to invest in ethnic and specialty radio, print, and television media, the only commercials we did were on Telemundo and Univision. And many people said that would be the death knell of our campaign, because the Latino community was only 7% of the electorate in the Massachusetts Southern. But I am so very glad that we made that investment and that we did not make any assumptions about who desires and deserves to have a seat at the table of democracy. And those choices and those decisions were informed by the leadership and the commitment and the love of community of Winalia Rivera. And so the Latino and Hispanic electoral power is growing, but someone has to organize it, someone has to mobilize it, and someone has to make sure that all that muscle that you're building is being flexed. And so thank you, Winalia, for that. And I would like to say...
Usually behind the scenes, so this is a different kind of setup for me. But first of all, I want to thank the consul and the congresswoman elect. But first, I just want to thank all of you and actually thank this entire city. As someone that, you know, I always say, I'm from Boston now, but via 93, Lawrence, Massachusetts, right? So I grew up in Lawrence, right? And, you know, my thank you to all of you and the reason why I dedicated my work to what I've done over the last 18 years and will continue is because you let this immigrant girl, forgotten part of the state, to come here and make her dreams come true. And the reason why I do the work that I do is because I'm not a unicorn. And I believe that all of us can do this work too, but that sometimes we just have to be willing to put one foot in front of the other and understand what that means. Y el mensaje que tengo para todos los latinos que están hoy en audiencia es que también tenemos una historia muy única que tiene que ver con persistencia. Y esta persistencia es un valor que viene importante en la trayectoria de la historia de este país y esta ciudad. Y tenemos que cumplir esa parte en el proceso de ese americano. And what I just shared with everybody in the audience in Spanish was that for all of us that are Latino or Latino-speaking or Latino culture, we have to understand and remember that we come from a deep cultural persistence. And that value is a value that's very important in the trajectory of this country and in the evolution of this city. So I hope that we continue to grow as a community together and that we shine, all of us, all at once, and thank you. [applause]
Thank you. Buenas tardes a todos. Mi nombre es Eli Pimentel. Es un honor para mí trabajar con la empresa de equipo de presidente Andrea Campbell. Good afternoon, everybody. My name is Eli Pimentel, and it's an honor for me to serve as Councilor Campbell's Chief of Staff. I'm sitting here now because I want to point out some folks, some other folks in the room. In the last year, Natalia Butuwe and Tania Del Rio started the Latinx Employee Resource Group, the Latinx ERG. And it's a group that has come together for volunteer events, really building community and really building a harbor with each other. So thank you to Natalia, who is still in the room, Catalina, Lopez Orpina, Ricardo, yes, and other folks in the council who are also part of the Latinx ERG. Okay, that's all that happened.
This is not just supposed to be boring in terms of like words, words, and words, tears, and tears. It's also supposed to celebrate music. So we're going to take a quick moment to share some music, and then we're going to come back with the rest of the presentations after that. Is that okay? Is that okay? [applause] This is not just supposed to be boring in terms of like words, words, and words, tears, and tears. It's also supposed to celebrate music. So we're going to take a quick moment to share some music, and then we're going to come back with the rest of the presentations after that. Is that okay? Is that okay? [applause] Brenda has over 15 years serving a variety of organizations, private equity backed, social innovation, publicly traded, international services. She has held a number of business and finance leadership roles and currently supports College Bound Dorchester, Boston-based entrepreneurial organization engaging the most influential and disconnected young people in our community. In her role as interim COO and prior to that CFO, Brenda advises on strategy and leads multiple teams toward building mission-centered operations. Brenda also has a passion for healthcare equity and access and serves as Board Chair of Harbor Health Services Incorporated, a 600-plus member organization serving over 28,000 patients across the Commonwealth. Brenda holds a Bachelor of Science in Business Administration from BU and an MBA from Duke University. Brenda is a longtime Boston resident hailing from the neighborhoods of Dorchester and Roxbury and recently ran her first Boston Marathon International Race, I might add. But this bio hardly sums up the contributions that Brenda has made, certainly to my life, to our community, to my family. I've known Brenda for almost 30 years now, and she is someone who takes the stones that are thrown at her, the barriers that are in her way, she breaks down those walls and then she uses those stepping stones to lift all of us up. I've seen that in her work at College Bound, I've seen that in her work at Diamond Rose Boston, I've seen that in how she cares for her own family and young people throughout our city. I'm very proud and blessed to call her friend, to call her family, and I love her. [applause] Me siento bien, orgullosa por Councilor Kim Jamie. Thank you. I want to give a quick word because it's so true that very often you are mentoring people who you've never met, but simply by your example inspiring them. So next I have the professional privilege and the personal honor of presenting an award to Winalia Rivera, who you may know from "Name of the Neighbor," or her labor organizing, or her work with the former Governor DeWalt Patrick. I have the blessing and the fortune, the benefit of her sister friendship, of her expertise, of her counsel, which is so, I'm just so, so fortunate to have had that. Winalia was the very first hired, she was my general consult in my congressional campaign. And I want to highlight that because very often we talk about leadership parity, and a lot of the emphasis is on whose name will be on the ballot and who will raise their hand to run for office. But it's so important that we are building the bench behind the candidates and that we are investing in Latino excellence and talent. And I'm so proud that I could do that with, with Winalia. I also just wanted to say that we're making strides, but here in the city of Boston, although we celebrate diversity, we, we're struggling to honor it. Because honoring diversity is about shared power. And the power of the Hispanic and Latino community is growing. The front page of the USA Today yesterday spoke about the power of the Hispanic vote. In our own campaign for Congress, when we made the decision to not go on television with mainstream media and to invest in ethnic and specialty radio, print, and television media, the only commercials we did were on Telemundo and Univision. And many people said that would be the death knell of our campaign, because the Latino community was only 7% of the electorate in the Massachusetts Southern. But I am so very glad that we made that investment and that we did not make any assumptions about who desires and deserves to have a seat at the table of democracy. And those choices and those decisions were informed by the leadership and the commitment and the love of community of Winalia Rivera. And so the Latino and Hispanic electoral power is growing, but someone has to organize it, someone has to mobilize it, and someone has to make sure that all that muscle that you're building is being flexed. And so thank you, Winalia, for that. Now, I would like to call this Brenda Rodriguez, someone who is near and dear to my heart. Brenda has over 15 years serving a variety of organizations, private equity backed, social innovation, publicly traded, international services. She has held a number of business and finance leadership roles and currently supports College Bound Dorchester, Boston-based entrepreneurial organization engaging the most influential and disconnected young people in our community. In her role as interim COO and prior to that CFO, Brenda advises on strategy and leads multiple teams toward building mission-centered operations. Brenda also has a passion for healthcare equity and access and serves as Board Chair of Harbor Health Services Incorporated, a 600-plus member organization serving over 28,000 patients across the Commonwealth. Brenda holds a Bachelor of Science in Business Administration from BU and an MBA from Duke University. Brenda is a longtime Boston resident hailing from the neighborhoods of Dorchester and Roxbury and recently ran her first Boston Marathon International Race, I might add. But this bio hardly sums up the contributions that Brenda has made, certainly to my life, to our community, to my family. I've known Brenda for almost 30 years now, and she is someone who takes the stones that are thrown at her, the barriers that are in her way, she breaks down those walls and then she uses those stepping stones to lift all of us up. I've seen that in her work at College Bound, I've seen that in her work at Diamond Rose Boston, I've seen that in how she cares for her own family and young people throughout our city. I'm very proud and blessed to call her friend, to call her family, and I love her. [applause] Me siento bien, orgullosa por Councilor Kim Jamie. Thank you so much. It's a pleasure and an honor to be here, and all of us will be honored today. It took us, it's been through a lot of great, a lot of persistence and love that we heard from some of our other honorees, and I don't take it for granted, some of the work that I've been involved with in College Bound Dorchester, you know, working with, with our young people that have been the most disaffected, the most disengaged, that have been forgotten about, and to remind her to me every day to believe in the genius of our young people. And I, I feel grateful that someone has opened a door for me and cracked the window. We don't always need to be empowered because we have the power, we just need people to give us a chance. And so I am thankful to the, to the, to the city council, especially to the women on the council. As a person of color and as a woman, I, I, I feel, they make me proud to be a resident of Boston, to be associated with this city. And so please continue the work. And while we're at our jobs and doing what we do and doing it well every day, we appreciate the work of the council. we appreciate the work of the City Council of Boston. Thank you.
Okay, everyone, before we pray for another performance, we want to take a moment to acknowledge Ivana Perez, Teen Winner Miss República Dominicana USA, and also her director, Stephanie Segrata.
Hello, how is everybody? My name is Ivana Perez and I am the Miss Teen República Dominicana USA this year. I wanted to say that I am very honored to be invited to this event and be amongst such influential people in our Latino culture. I want to say that no matter how far our roots may be displaced, they remain intact and strong. We will always remain Latinos. And I am very proud to be here. Thank you.
I get to take a picture up here. Captain Jane? Thanks.
All right, while they're taking their photo, we're going to have the photo from Babu Goro come out and they're going to start their performance.
So let me just say, I wasn't going to say anything, but I had to follow that. I want to say thank you for being here among all the other leaders in our community and those who are coming up after us, who will have voice, who will give voice to those who are disenfranchised and will be living in our communities in the future. Thank you.
In the town of Boston, qué lindo que se está reconociendo el primo México en todas las esquinas en toda la ciudad. Y ahora el reconocimiento del distrito de Frank Baker, que tú que dices que es un lindo. Quiero llamar a Juan de los Santos. Juan de los Santos vive en todas las áreas, siempre presente, ha estado por décadas trabajando y se ha retirado como el latino que ha tenido la posición más alta en la escuadra, fue el jefe de los ojos. Y un gran orgullo y privilegio representar a mi amigo Juan de los Santos.
Well, I want to say good evening. And I want to say thank you very much to City Council President Andy Campbell, for the speaking award and also members of the City Council. I also want to say thank you to Juan Lopez and also your staff for what's left to me, because I know everybody here, every Latino here deserves this award. My parents brought me here, me and my sisters at a young age, 44 years ago, in the most beautiful city of Boston. And I know you heard a lot about Jaime Rodriguez. But Jaime Rodriguez, 37 years ago, moved to California and taught me, and I'm Dominican, for those of you that don't know, and Jaime is Puerto Rican. He brought me in, taught me how to be an activist, how to be a leader. He helped me when he came to my promotion through his organization, when I transferred to Chemists and Chief in Suffolk City Department. So for those of you who think that you can make it on your own, though, there's always somebody to help. And Jaime, I don't want to forget you for that. I want to thank my parents for making me the man that I am. My friends are here, my family is here. And I want to thank everybody for this prestigious award. Thank you.
Y ahora, de parte del concejal Frank Baker, otra vez, queremos, queremos llamar a una persona, Aida Silva. Y Aida, como ustedes saben, está trabajando en todas las áreas. Tiene una gran labor, un talento, la reina del dominó. Y sabemos que siempre trabaja con nuestras jóvenes y toda nuestra comunidad. Los otros queremos saludar al grupo que está aquí de Villas de la Alegría. Todas mayores, nuestra juventud. Y donde Aida Silva. Como ustedes, una hermana. Felicitaciones, Aida Silva.
Buenas tardes. Yo quiero dedicar el evento al Señor, a Dios, Jesucristo. Yo quiero dedicar ese momento. Sin él, no somos nada. Trabajar para ustedes, para mí, no es cuestión de ser voluntaria, no es cuestión de ganarme el cariño de ustedes, no es cuestión de levantar mi voz como hispana. Es solamente lo que mi corazón anhela y por eso Dios me tiene viva. Gracias y que Dios nos bendiga a todos.